For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, December 7, 2015. Call the rule, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagura?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had minutes from regular session of November 16, 2015, and closed session of the same date. Any issues or changes? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda or non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during council meeting that you're allowed to address at council. If you wish to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Good evening. My name's Mary House. My address is 8793 US 23 South in Osseanique. So I'm not a city resident, but I'm here with the support for a four-year university and asking you to pass that resolution. And I noted in your minutes, it's number 13. So I figured I'd make my comments now and then I have to go to another meeting down the way at ACC. So here are a few things I think you should consider. There is no four-year university, public or otherwise, in the northeastern half of the lower peninsula, and because of that, students must leave this area for a higher education, and they seldom return. We are losing kids raised with our values. On average, Michigan residents with a four-year degree earn nearly twice as much as those with only a high school diploma, and they have one-third the rate of unemployment. But those kids don't generally come back. So we are left with an undereducated and underemployed workforce here in northeast Michigan. Only 26% of the 18- to 24-year-olds in this region are enrolled in college, substantially lower than the statewide rate of 39%. This area's unemployment rate is higher, and the median income is lower than the state average. We have the opportunity to kill many birds with one stone right here. Having a four-year university here will encourage more local kids to go to college, thereby increasing average incomes. That's because a study by Lake Superior State University found that one new job is created for every two students enrolled. I'm sure many of you can remember, there was a time when the Fletcher paper mill wasn't just a few buildings strung along the river. The paper mill ran six buildings deep back from the river and all along the river. It employed hundreds. The Vessar cement plant employed hundreds, so did Abitibi and the Vessar Foundry, along with many others. There were many more jobs, and our population was bigger, and it didn't ruin our way of life. I think it only made it better. It was certainly better for all of our local businesses. What if we could wave a magic wand and bring all those jobs back? Who wouldn't do that? Picture the creation of 500 good-paying jobs practically overnight with no fleet of large trucks carrying logs or cement products through town. That's what a four-year university would do for us. The money spent from those jobs would create more opportunities for us here locally. In 2000, our population in Alpena County was 31,314. In 2010, it was 29,598, down almost 2,000. During that same 10-year period, school enrollment went down 25%. We are moving in the wrong direction, in my opinion. How long does it have to go before our local businesses cannot support their operations? Now, I'm not advocating the rampant growth, rampant growth like we've seen in Traverse City. What I am saying is this gives us an opportunity for growth within reason and an ability to maintain it at a level that would allow our local businesses to prosper and our citizens an opportunity to enjoy the cultural benefits that come with proximity to such an educational institution. The resolution we're going to consider later, it doesn't ask for an investment in time or money from you. It just asks that you join others in encouraging the Michigan Legislature to consider this idea. And I would strongly ask that you, when you consider that, take those comments into account and at least pass the resolution of support for that. I think it's important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jim Byer, and I live in Oscoda. 7076 Cedar Lake Road in Oscoda. I am the township supervisor slash mayor of Oscoda, and I'm here to follow up the lady that here. Most of the municipal entities in my area, Towas, Alcona County, I- Oscoda unanimously have passed resolutions to support this. I'm originally from Sheboygan, and I'm older than I-75. So when I wanted to go to school from Sheboygan, I went to Central, and it was a hike. You know, I can remember my dad coming to Alpena Community College in the late '50s, and I think at that time the college was only two years old to try to get some kind of a branch in Sheboygan. I mean, it was just a battle to get any kind of education. And so I hope you will seriously consider this. I think Alpena is the ideal center place for that. Sheboygan, Roger City on one side, Oscoda, Harrisville, Towas on the other, inland, of course, Hillman, et cetera. But I could be wrong. I hope I am. Where someone was quoted here as saying, "I don't want this town to be a college town." Oscoda would like to be that college town if you decide that you don't want to be, but you've got the better location. So anyway, I hope you will give this some strong positive thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Gilmet, 220 Chapel Street, City Building Official.
At the last council meeting, when I was out on St. Antlers Day, I know someone came and had a concern with some neighbors over some fowl in their backyard, and just want to bring you up to speed on that. At the time they were at the meeting, the citation had already been written several weeks before that. We were just waiting for it to work its way through the courts, and it did. On Monday, the 30th, the judge ordered her to remove all of the birds from the backyard, and that has in fact happened, so just want to give you a heads up on that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Robert Keys. I live on 1514 South Third Avenue. I wanted to speak to you today about the opportunity for the four-year university. I've been mostly a lifelong resident of Alpena, except for the time that I've served in the military, and then, of course, had to go away to college to earn my education. But I wanted to lend my voice as just a normal citizen, a young citizen who's looking to start their family here. And I had this whole speech prepared about economic advantages, and I'm sure you've heard that five times over by now, and so I just want to speak from my heart. I want to stay here in Alpena. I want to grow a family here. I want to see my kids eventually be able to stay as well and invest in the future. A four-year university gives us an opportunity to do that, and it's no secret. You can look at the census data. Our population is shrinking, especially those who can build a future for us. If anything, think about, and you're saying you want to think about the future. I read your master plan, and you already identified that our current education system already brings business in, how much more so with a more educated, more skilled population and thousands of more students to actually be able to serve with our businesses. So you're asking, well, I'm asking you to vote yes on this. I mean, it's going to be a gamble, and like someone else already said, I don't want rapid expansion either. That's never going to be a good thing. But it's going to create opportunity, and opportunity is what we need, and families going forward is what's going to build this community. Otherwise, we're just, we're dead in the water. And so I ask you, I want to stay here. I might have to leave, but I want to stay here. So please, invest in our future.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, the consent agenda this evening. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $565,519.2. B is approval of a $25,000 budget amendment to cover the cost of the Second Avenue Bridge inspection with $20,000 from the fund balance. C is approval of early childhood block party slash healthcare, I'm sorry, slash child health fair in the City Hall parking lot on June 10, 2016. And D is the approval of 2016 Municipal Council meeting schedule. I move we approve the consent agenda. Can I present?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, no presentations, nothing really down to 11. Report officers. We have a report on the November 3, 2015 election.
In response to the mayor's request for a brief report on the results of the November 3 general election, I put together the following information. The Dial-A-Ride Millage passed at about a 462 to 208. Mayor and Councilwoman Nielsen and Councilman Noah all received over 500 votes. They were uncontested, but they're all seated again. The City of Alpena currently has 8,085 registered voters. The turnout at the polls for the general election was 676 people, or 8.36%. This is a very low turnout, but not surprising with unopposed seats and a non-controversial proposal. A typical odd-year election can have some, some or all the following. They can have a municipal council, school board, college board, and/or local proposals. The voter turnout would be 15% to 20%. A state election would have about 37% voter turnout, and a presidential election usually has about 57%. The total cost to administer the November 3 election was approximately $10,900. The largest expenses were the precinct workers' payroll, which is at $4,600, ballots and memory cards at a cost of $3,043, DPW and clerical labor costs were $1,300, I'm rounding them off, and newspaper notices cost over $1,000. The balance of the costs were for the rental of the precinct locations, board of canvassers, and mailing costs. And whether it's a small or large election, the same process is necessary from start to finish, so the size of the election has little bearing on the administrative time. All election types begin approximately three months before the election to start preparing. There are nominating petitions and proposals to be checked, supplies to order and prepare, equipment to test, poll books to load, and training as necessary. Costs would be slightly higher for a larger election because more ballots would be necessary. Ballots, I believe, are about .35 cents each. So, if there's any questions on that?
With the ballot, I was curious, Karen, is it a, do you have to order in a certain percentage of the registered voters? Do you have so many copies that come in? Is it a?
The state would like to see 80%, 75-80%. We do not order that many. For a presidential, we may. And the federal government on the presidential, they will reimburse for those ballots.
All right, thanks, Karen. And I guess if I asked for that data, just as a, as a report, and it may or may not have some, some value when we go into the next, into the next topic as well, so.
Okay.
So with nothing else on that, B is consolidation of precincts 1 and 2. Karen as well.
We've been thinking about doing this for a long time. By city charter, Section 14.5, the election commission consisting of the mayor, the attorney, and the clerk, is tasked with the operations of the elections in the city. In an effort to save considerable resources, we would meet, we will meet after the council meeting to discuss the consolidation of precincts 1 and 2. The city currently has six precincts and 8,085 registered voters. The number of registered voters in each precinct is fairly even, with precinct 6 having the most by approximately 1,600, or at approximately 1,600. State law allows up to 2,999 registered voters per precinct. By combining 1 and 2, the registered voters would be approximately 2,500. Though this amount is much higher than the other precincts, historically, the voter turnout is lower in these two precincts. And I laid out some historical information on the 2012 and the 2014 elections. In both of those, you can see that the combination of precinct 1 and 2 is the same as just 3, 4, 5, or 6. By combining the two precincts, there will be savings in supplies, labor, and equipment. The savings would be 1,000 to 1,500 per election, not including equipment such as tabulators and laptops. With the introduction of the laptop poll books, it has been more difficult to find precinct workers willing to learn the laptop, so combining precincts would reduce the number of precinct workers I would need. Both precincts are located at the Aplex, so there would not be a location change. And in order to merge the two precincts, I must submit the information to the state by January and send out new voter ID cards to those registered in precinct 2. And we can merge it either way, 1 to 2 or 2 to 1, so.
Karen, they both go to the same location to vote anyway?
They do.
So I probably wouldn't put mailers out for information, because they could just?
I would do that anyways.
You still do that?
You know, we would do announcements, put it on the website, maybe put it in the paper, but we would announce it for a while. But yeah, there wouldn't be anywhere new to go, and they will get new cards. They have to get an application registration change to show them, "This is your new precinct."
I emailed you earlier just to kind of, as a heads up, that I would ask, I guess, and maybe it would pertain to Adam, Greg, if anybody asked. I spoke briefly to Greg about whether, does, does changing our precincts affect anything else as far as, as far as qualifications for grants or any other kind of applications that we file for any means that we might consider? Nothing, doesn't have any effect on anything?
No doubt, no. Nothing I've ever applied for.
We've actually went from about 8,400 registered voters in 2008, I believe, till, you know, 8,085 now. We are losing registered voters here.
Karen, do the other precincts still stay 3, 4, 5, 6?
Yes. I mean, ideally, we've talked, Steve and I, because he did the maps for me. Ideally, it would be nice to have them in order, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, but to change them all means thousands of cards would have to go out to all the precincts, and I think it would be confusing. With 1 and 2 merging, there'll either be 1 or 2. I mean, I haven't decided what would be best, to go 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 1, 3, 4, 5, 6. Either way, there's going to be 1 missing. Now, if, if the precincts 1 and 2 ever got up to 2,999, that would be something that would be huge to think about. You would have to split them.
And then that could just be your 2 or 1?
You go back to 1 and 2 again.
Right, which is another reason not to change all of them, because we could just make that split right where it is.
Yeah, go right there, yeah.
My only other, I guess my only other thought when I was looking at the map was that a lot of times, depending on what the, what the ballot is, is that it's, you can, you can look and see what numbers are coming in from the precincts and kind of get a general idea of, of what the ballot proposal or election is as far as the, as far as where the line is. So currently, currently, the majority of what we call the north side on the other side of the river is in precinct 2, and the, and the homes closer to the river and on the other side are precinct 1. So it generally kind of establishes, you know, if it, if something completely fails in precinct 1, but 4, 6, and 5, it's overwhelmingly supported, that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of where you might want to have your focus in the event that there's either for or against, you know? I'm not necessarily saying, but just in the event that there, they have a difference as in of opinion on any, anything on the ballot. I don't know if that's something that should be, that's a huge issue as far as where the, where the new map would, would entail, but it was kind of on my mind earlier. I didn't put a ton of thought into it, but I don't know if anybody else had that same thought.
They still generally get that from the 5 and 11.
Yeah, they are in different areas. I don't know if there's any other, any thought track on that. I don't know. With the, with the previous report, as far as savings, I mean, it's, so you're looking at basically what this would do would be, would be a cost savings with the hiring, with the paying, the precinct workers.
The DPW wouldn't be going, they'd still have to go to the same place. They wouldn't have to set up as much.
Because I'm not, I've never voted at a combined precinct station before. So it's in the same location, but currently it's, everything is absolutely separate.
Just like, just like at the Methodist church where I vote, they're on Ripley. It's what, 5 and?
4 and 5.
4 and 5 there, so they're just right next to each other.
And they actually love it, because they can help each other out. If someone has trouble, they can say, "Oh, we've had that trouble before," and then they help each other out. So that's kind of ideal to have two precincts in the same location, even 3 if we could. Some locations are great parking, with the buildings small, and some are great big gyms, but the parking is bad, and that's why we haven't moved anything else right now.
Anyone have any other input? Because that's a decision that'll be made after this meeting with the, with the Election Commission.
I just wanted to let you know. Get some input if you can.
Unless you had your objections.
Right. You could provide any kind of input you like, because the three of us on the Election Commission are right here, listening.
I trust Karen's judgment on this stuff, so makes sense to me.
Makes sense. I trust it, and Karen.
I just trust Karen.
Okay. Must be the green and white thing. Okay, thank you, Karen, for both. We're up to resolution number 2015-12, a resolution granting approval of an application for a neighborhood enterprise zone certificate for Steve Straley doing business as Alpena Furniture.
This is just like the previous one we brought before you a few weeks ago, a month ago, with the Armstrong. In this time, it's Steve Straley doing business as Alpena Furniture. He submitted an application on October 14 of this year for an existing structure at 325 North Second Avenue for a 12-year tax abatement for a neighborhood enterprise zone. The application has been reviewed by Jeff Shea, the city assessor, and Don Gilmet, city building inspector, and found to be favorable. Under Public Act 147, the state tax commission requires the governing body of the local government unit by resolution to approve the application for a neighborhood enterprise zone certificate. City staff is recommending approval of resolution number 2015-12. If so approved, I would forward the resolution to the state tax commission within the required time period. The state tax commission will then review the application for compliance. The city assessor and all taxing units affected will be notified by certified mail if the certificate will be issued.
I guess, Greg, the question I've got is, can you remind us again how we arrived at the 12-year abatement?
Sure. Yeah, I don't know if it was earlier this year or last year. We, the council had questioned, because in the past, everything in the downtown automatically got 12 years of abatement. And when we set up the Thunder Bay, we had criteria that determined how long you would get, so it wasn't an automatic. And council wanted the same thing for the downtown, and so we, staff committed to putting that together before our next, we would get our next grant, which we then did, and it went to council, and they approved it. And in this case, Adam is on that. In fact, the ones who are on that are Cindy, Don Gilmet, Adam, Paul, Leslie Dort, and Paul Sabre. And they met and reviewed it, and there are criteria. The first two are pretty much cut and dry. You either get whatever the points are based on the amount of investment per unit, and they're at the top. So they got the maximum points there, and also for the total number of units being done, they got the maximum points. So they had 10 points. The others are bonus points based on character, design, and interior amenities, and when the group met, they awarded them 3 additional points. With that 13, that came out to 12 years. So that's how they gave them out. As an example, I believe when they did it for Mr. Armstrong's property downtown, that was 4 years?
6 years.
6 years? Okay. Because again, they used the criteria, the numbers only came out for the 6-year abatement. So that's the reason for the, that we did this, was that it just wouldn't be an automatic 12, that it would be based on your investment, how many units you were doing, and what you were doing in terms of historic character, maintaining the historic character of the building, the kind of amenities you put in the units.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes.
I like the process. It's, yeah, it makes it a little bit easier, obviously, for our, for our decision.
Property is important property to our downtown, and it's, it needed a facelift, and I'm kind of excited to see some change there and some more housing as well, so.
Agreed.
And it's a worthwhile project.
So is that part of your motion?
Yeah. I agree. We passed resolution 2015-12.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, no presentations, nothing really down to 11. Report officers. We have a report on the November 3, 2015 election.
In response to the mayor's request for a brief report on the results of the November 3 general election, I put together the following information. The Dial-A-Ride Millage passed at about a 462 to 208. Mayor and Councilwoman Nielsen and Councilman Noah all received over 500 votes. They were uncontested, but they're all seated again. The City of Alpena currently has 8,085 registered voters. The turnout at the polls for the general election was 676 people, or 8.36%. This is a very low turnout, but not surprising with unopposed seats and a non-controversial proposal. A typical odd-year election can have some, some or all the following. They can have a municipal council, school board, college board, and/or local proposals. The voter turnout would be 15% to 20%. A state election would have about 37% voter turnout, and a presidential election usually has about 57%. The total cost to administer the November 3 election was approximately $10,900. The largest expenses were the precinct workers' payroll, which is at $4,600, ballots and memory cards at a cost of $3,043, DPW and clerical labor costs were $1,300, I'm rounding them off, and newspaper notices cost over $1,000. The balance of the costs were for the rental of the precinct locations, board of canvassers, and mailing costs. And whether it's a small or large election, the same process is necessary from start to finish, so the size of the election has little bearing on the administrative time. All election types begin approximately 3 months before the election to start preparing. There are nominating petitions and proposals to be checked, supplies to order and prepare, equipment to test, poll books to load, and training as necessary. Costs would be slightly higher for a larger election because more ballots would be necessary. Ballots, I believe, are about .35 cents each. So, if there's any questions on that?
With the ballot, I was curious, Karen, is it a, do you have to order in a certain percentage of the registered voters? Do you have so many copies that come in? Is it a?
The state would like to see 80%, 75-80%. We do not order that many.
Okay.
For a presidential, we may. And the federal government on the presidential, they will reimburse for those ballots.
All right, thanks, Karen. And I guess if I asked for that data, just, just as a, as a report, and it may or may not have some, some value when we go into the next, into the next topic as well, so.
Okay.
So with nothing else on that, B is consolidation of precincts 1 and 2. Karen as well.
We've been thinking about doing this for a long time. By city charter, Section 14.5, the election commission consisting of the mayor, the attorney, and the clerk, is tasked with the operations of the elections in the city. In an effort to save considerable resources, we would meet, we will meet after the council meeting to discuss the consolidation of precincts 1 and 2. The city currently has 6 precincts and 8,085 registered voters. The number of registered voters in each precinct is fairly even, with precinct 6 having the most by approximately 1,600, or at approximately 1,600. State law allows up to 2,999 registered voters per precinct. By combining 1 and 2, the registered voters would be approximately 2,500. Though this amount is much higher than the other precincts, historically, the voter turnout is lower in these two precincts. And I laid out some historical information on the 2012 and the 2014 elections. In both of those, you can see that the combination of precinct 1 and 2 is the same as just 3, 4, 5, or 6. By combining the two precincts, there will be savings in supplies, labor, and equipment. The savings would be 1,000 to 1,500 per election, not including equipment such as tabulators and laptops. With the introduction of the laptop poll books, it has been more difficult to find precinct workers willing to learn the laptop, so combining precincts would reduce the number of precinct workers I would need. Both precincts are located at the Aplex, so there would not be a location change. And in order to merge the two precincts, I must submit the information to the state by January and send out new voter ID cards to those registered in precinct 2. And we can merge it either way, 1 to 2 or 2 to 1, so.
Karen, they both go to the same location to vote anyway?
They do.
So I probably wouldn't put mailers out for information, because they could just?
I would do that anyways.
You still do that?
You know, we would do announcements, put it on the website, maybe put it in the paper, but we would announce it for a while. But yeah, there wouldn't be anywhere new to go, and they will get new cards. They have to get an application, registration change to show them, "This is your new precinct."
I emailed you earlier just to kind of, as a heads up, that I would ask, I guess, and maybe it would pertain to Adam, Greg, if anybody asked. I spoke briefly to Greg about whether, does, does changing our precincts affect anything else as far as, as far as qualifications for grants or any other kind of applications that we file for any means that we might consider? Nothing, doesn't have any effect on anything?
No doubt, no. Nothing I've ever applied for.
We've actually went from about 8,400 registered voters in 2008, I believe, till, you know, 8,085 now. We are losing registered voters here.
Karen, do the other precincts still stay 3, 4, 5, 6?
Yes. I mean, ideally, we've talked, Steve and I, because he did the maps for me. Ideally, it would be nice to have them in order, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, but to change them all means thousands of cards would have to go out to all the precincts, and I think it would be confusing.
Yeah.
With 1 and 2 merging, there'll either be 1 or 2. I mean, I haven't decided what would be best, to go 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 1, 3, 4, 5, 6. Either way, there's going to be 1 missing. Now, if, if the precincts 1 and 2 ever got up to 2,999, that would be something that would be huge to think about. You would have to split them.
And then that could just be your 2 or 1?
You go back to 1 and 2 again.
Right, which is another reason not to change all of them, because we could just make that split right where it is.
Yeah, go right there, yeah.
Those registered in precinct two. Now, we can merge it either way, one to two or two to one, so.
Karen, they both go to the same location about anyway.
They do.
So I probably wouldn't put mailers out for information because they could just.
I would do that anyways though.
You still do that?
You know, we would do announcements, put it on the website. They'd maybe put it in the paper, but we would announce it for a while. But yeah, there wouldn't be anywhere new to go and they won't get new cards. They have to get an application registration change to show them this is your new precinct.
I emailed you earlier just to kind of, as a heads up, that I would ask, I guess, and maybe it would pertain to Adam, Greg, if anybody asked. I spoke briefly to Greg about whether, does changing our precincts affect anything else as far as qualifications for grants or any other kind of applications that we file for any means that we might consider? Nothing, doesn't have any effect on anything?
No, they don't work, no.
Nothing I've ever applied before.
We've actually went from about eighty-four hundred registered voters in 2008, I believe, till, you know, eight thousand eighty-five now. We are losing registered voters.
Karen, do the other precincts still stay three, four, five, six?
Yes. I mean, ideally, we've talked Steve and I, because he did the maps for me. Ideally, it would be nice to have them in order, one, two, three, four, five, six. But to change them all means thousands of cards would have to go out to all the precincts. And I think it would be confusing.
Yeah.
With one and two merging, there'll either be one or two. I mean, I haven't decided what would be best. To go two, three, four, five, six, or one, three, four, five, six? Either way, there's going to be one missing. Now, if the precincts one and two ever got up to two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, that would be something in the future to think about. You would have to split them.
And then that could just be your two or your one?
You'd go back to one and two.
Right, which is another reason not to change all of them, because we could just make that split right where it is.
Yeah, go right there, yeah.
My only other, I guess my only other thought when I was looking at the map was that a lot of times, depending on what the ballot is, is that it's, you can look and see what numbers are coming in from the precincts and kind of get a general idea of what the ballot proposal or election is as far as where the line is. So currently, currently, the majority of what we call the north side on the other side of the river is in precinct two and the homes closer to the river and on the other side are precinct one. So it generally kind of establishes, you know, if it, if something completely fails in precinct one, but four, six, and five, it's overwhelmingly supported, that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of where you might want to have your focus in the event that there's either for or against, you know, I'm not necessarily saying, but just in the event that they're, they have a difference as an opinion on any, anything on the ballot. I don't know if that's something that should be, that's a huge issue as far as where the new map would entail, but it was kind of on my mind earlier. I didn't put a ton of thought into it, but I don't know if anybody else had that. Same thought.
Just don't generally get that from the five left.
Yeah, they are in different areas. I don't know if there's any other, any thought track on that? I don't know. With the previous report, as far as savings, I mean, it's, so you're looking at, basically what this would do would be, would be a cost savings with the hiring, with the paying the precinct workers.
The DPW wouldn't be going, they'd still have to go to the same place, they wouldn't have to set up as much.
Because I'm a, I've never voted at a combined precinct station before. So it's in the same location, but currently, it's, everything is absolutely separate.
Just like at the Methodist Church where I vote there on Ripley. It's what, five and?
Four and five.
Four and five there, so they're just right next to each other.
And they actually love it because they can help each other out. If someone has trouble, they can say, oh, we've had that trouble before, and then they help each other out. So that's kind of ideal to have two precincts in the same location, even three if we could. Some locations are great parking with the building small, and some are great big gyms, but the parking is bad, and that's why we haven't moved anything else right now.
Anyone have any other input? Because that's a decision that'll be made after this meeting with the election commission.
I just wanted to let you know. Get some input if you have.
Unless you had your objections.
Right, you could provide any kind of input you like, because the three of us on the election commission are right here, listening.
I trust Karen's judgment on this stuff, so it makes sense to me.
Makes sense. I trust it. Thank Karen.
I just trust Karen.
Okay. That's where the green and white thing.
Okay, thank you, Karen, for both. We're up to resolution number 2015-12, a resolution granting approval of an application for a neighborhood enterprise zone certificate for Steve Straley doing business as Alpena Furniture.
This is just like the previous one we brought before you a few weeks ago, a month ago, with the Armstrong. In this time, it's Steve Straley doing business as Alpena Furniture. He submitted an application on October fourteenth of this year for an existing structure at 325 North Second Avenue for a twelve-year tax abatement for a neighborhood enterprise zone. The application has been reviewed by Jeff Shea, the city assessor, and Don Gilmett, city building inspector, and found to be favorable. Under Public Act 147, the state tax commission requires the governing body of the local government unit by resolution to approve the application for a neighborhood enterprise zone certificate. City staff is recommending approval of resolution number 2015-12. If so approved, I would forward the resolution to the state tax commission within the required time period. The state tax commission will then review the application for compliance. The city assessor and all taxing units affected will be notified by certified mail if the certificate will be issued.
I guess Greg, the question I've got is, can you remind us again how we arrived at the twelve-year abatement?
Sure. Yeah, I don't know if it was earlier this year or last year. The council had questioned because in the past, everything in the downtown automatically got twelve years of abatement. And when we set up the Thunder Bay, we had criteria that determined how long you would get, so it wasn't an automatic. And council wanted the same thing for the downtown. And so we, staff committed to putting that together before our next, we would get our next grant, which we then did, and it went to council, and they approved it. And in this case, Adam is on that. In fact, the ones who are on that are Cindy, Don Gilmett, Adam, Paul, Leslie Doherty, and Paul Sabre. And they met and reviewed it, and there are criteria. The first two are pretty much cut and dry. You either get whatever the points are based on the amount of investment per unit, and they're at the top. So they got the maximum points there, and also for the total number of units being done, they got the maximum points. So they hit ten points. The others are bonus points based on character, design, and interior amenities. And when the group met, they awarded them three additional points. With that thirteen, that came out to twelve years. So that's how they were bound. Now, as an example, I believe when they did it for Mr. Armstrong's property downtown, that was four years?
Six years.
Six years? Okay. Because again, they used the criteria, the numbers only came out for the six-year abatement. So that's the reason for the, that we did this was that it just wouldn't be an automatic twelve, that it would be based on your investment, how many units you were doing, and what you were doing in terms of historic character, maintaining the historic character of the building, the kind of amenities you put in the units. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes.
I like the process. Yeah, it makes it a little bit easier, obviously, for our decision.
Property is an important property to our downtown, and it's needed a facelift, and I'm kind of excited to see some change there and some more housing as well, so. And it's a worthwhile project.
So is that part of your motion?
Yeah. I feel we passed resolution 2015-12.
Seven.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walbora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for all the work on that. Communications and petitions. Okay, last up, unfinished business. It's a four-word Northeast Michigan resolution of support. Jim and Joe aren't here this evening, so I guess they'll use it to meet them.
I guess I'll start by saying that I really appreciate the support in tabling this for the three weeks. It certainly gave me an opportunity to get a little bit better educated on not only what the community thinks, because otherwise, some parts of the community may not have been able to come in and voice their opinion, and I may have not have spoken to the community leaders and residents that I did have the opportunity to. I guess with that said, I did, I threw out, I threw out an email to several of our community leaders and some residents just to kind of get a feel for what their perspective was. I didn't necessarily find that there was any opposition to a four-year university here in Alpena or in our region. It wasn't necessarily the idea or the proposal of the concept, but more how it was presented, which had a lot to do with the issue that I'm having. And I guess I just find it a little bit odd that I'm maybe the only one. I know I was the only one at the last meeting that really had, that really had a bit of an issue. And here, and maybe it stems from, maybe I can give you a little bit better perspective. It may or may not, may or may not help you out at all or not, but we passed a, we passed a resolution or proclamation not too long ago to support Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Greg and I made a couple of revisions to the original proposed resolution, and then we brought it here and we passed it. Well, literally, we know that two weeks later, we find out in national headlines that our city abolished Columbus Day. And it was nowhere, it's a bit humorous, I guess. I tried to find it that way. But nowhere in our proposal or in our resolution did we state anything about abolishing Columbus Day. We had, we took what was presented to us with what it was worth, what we thought it was, and we signed it and sent it out there. And my comparison to that with this is that there are so many questions about the proposal that are unanswered. It is, and maybe it's, maybe that's by design, but pretty much everything I asked, the team that was here before and the leaders of our community that I spoke with had also had an opportunity to ask those and some other questions. They're all basically completely unanswered, and that's what makes me hesitant about, I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm signing, I feel like I'm signing either compared to a blank check or a permission slip to someone where I'm really not even sure when I ask what's, who is on forward Northeast Michigan? Who specifically are they? Where is their funding? Where will they take these? What's the next step? And where will they take these resolutions that we're signing? That's more of my issue, and I'm not sure, Mary, if you're still here, if you're part of that organization, or if you know anything more clear as far as, help me feel like I'm supporting something that's going to become what's presented to us and not, not something that isn't. Or maybe, maybe someone here can just enlighten me on how, why I shouldn't have some hesitation to just giving carte blanche, Alpena supports this idea, but it's not. Yeah, please, Mary, I don't, yeah, Mary, and I don't know if Mary mentioned that she's county commissioner. I give her a little bit more leeway, I guess, to join our conversation if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. Initially, it was a group of people that just got together that had an interest in that. I was part of that group, as was my husband. I would tell you that the county board passed that resolution at our last meeting. It was unanimous with one member that was excused. I think the reason you don't have those answers, Mr. Mayor, is if there's not support for even the idea, I believe that that group, and like, it's not really a sign-up group where you go and you register or you sign up. Like I say, it was a group of people that wanted to do something to help the kids in this area, because all along our northeast side, there isn't that type of opportunity. So if there's not support in Alpena, then they're not even going to pursue it any further to answer those type of questions. To me, with all due respect, I viewed it as, this is a gentleman with a passion, let's see how far I went. It was said at an Alpena township meeting, when they were discussing this and I was present, that it's pie in the sky. I don't necessarily agree with that assessment, but at this point, it is in the future. It's an idea that a man is passionate about, and he's passionate about this community and this whole region, and I agree with those passions. But if it's not supported here, they are going to, I think, look at Ascoada, possibly Gaylord, somewhere else that wants it. But, and I don't blame Mr. Lukasnovich, he's put a lot of his time and effort into this, and quite frankly, he's not going to be able to answer those questions unless there's support for it, because he's not going to go forward with trying to push the legislature into considering it here. I don't know if that helps you or not, but I view it as, and the other concern I will say, some people have said, well, it's going to be in competition with ACC. I don't believe that to be the case. I was born and raised in Midland. Saginaw Valley State University before was a state university, was there, there was Northwood Institute. There was another community college within that tri-city area, and when Saginaw Valley went to establish itself as a state university, they actually worked in conjunction. And I mean, it was a wonderful stepping stone, and that's how I view it. I don't see where, you know, I am not saying anything negative about ACC. I think that was a wonderful step. But if I'm, and maybe Councilman Sexton, you can address this. Was it two presidents ago, maybe even three presidents ago? I think that person envisioned ACC becoming a four-year institution at one point. So it wasn't an idea that was foreign. It's not meant to be in competition with ACC, but quite frankly, if we're not interested in it, I don't think he's going to go forward with trying to push it through. It's a huge feat, and it'll be, you know, he's not asking for your financial support right now. He's not asking for anything but say, yes, I think our kids should have easier access to a four-year university in our area if that's what they want. I just don't see a downside to the idea. If down the road, if it becomes more of a reality, we need to reconsider, or I need to reconsider, but the idea of giving a chance to our kids, and anybody else, I guess, that's interested is, make it more accessible, make it cheaper if possible. If they can commute to the four-year like some with ACC, why wouldn't we want to give our kids a better future and hopefully stay here? But I think it's well-established that nowadays, if you don't have some sort of four-year degree, and that's not including, I mean, ACC's got a couple of areas that they're top-notch with a certificate or a degree. It's the concrete program, the linesman. I mean, they've really done well. But there's a lot of kids out there who don't have a four-year degree, who can't get one because financially, accessibility, all those things, it's just, it's just not within their wherewithal to do it. And, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd say, what parent doesn't want their kid's life to be a little easier than theirs and a little better opportunity for them to make a new living, even if it isn't in our region? I mean, I just don't see, I don't see a downside to saying, yes, I support education. I see downside if you say, no, you don't. I don't know. Bad answer.
I appreciate that, I really do. Thanks for sticking around.
Anything else?
No.
Because I've headed down to.
Okay, I didn't want to keep you this long, but I appreciate you staying.
Enjoy that meeting.
And I certainly don't, I certainly don't, I guess, see this as pie in the sky. It's a long stretch, everybody is obviously aware of that, but if I saw it as that, I obviously would have just signed the thing last meeting and gone on with it. But I certainly had a lot of, again, opportunity to speak with a lot of people on this subject. And again, it's, and it, because I, you know, I made comments as far as, does it fit our vision? Does it fit our plan? Is it where we want to go? And so, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the people I talked to or emailed correspondence with were people in that position, that have come before us and constructed this plan. So I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, put enough thought into it. It's not so much that I'm against or disagree with anything, Mary, or anybody else had to say. It's just, it's just really, I guess, by far the most open and vague resolution that I've seen since I took this office. So I was very cautious and still, I guess, and still am, but I guess I'll stop at that and just, anybody else got any other, anything else to add?
Well, I, as I thought about this and read about it since the last time we were here, we have six kids in our family. How wonderful it would have been for some of them anyway to stay here if they wanted a four-year degree. And that has finally happened with the nursing program. But I also think about Lansing and East Lansing. There are many kids that go to LCC and just can't wait to get to Michigan State. They want to, they want to stay there. They want to finish at Michigan State. And it can work, it could work. I think it'd be a beautiful thing for our community and a fine opportunity for a lot of kids in our community. It is vague. On the other hand, they haven't asked us for anything else, just a resolution saying, we bless you, and out the door. It doesn't sound like we're committed to anything, really.
Just to maybe oversimplify, you know, Matt's question or the answer is, they're just asking us to support the idea. So there's not specifics until they get to the state level, because the state's going to dictate what we can, cannot do as a four-year college. And just to kind of reiterate, really, a couple of things people said, we are the most undereducated section of Michigan. And it's not our population, it's our lack of access to that education. We're also probably the most overaged area of Michigan. And my ten years here, a lot of the struggles I see is because we don't have enough young people, like the gentleman that spoke before. We don't have enough people eighteen, twenty, thirty-five that want to stay here and have a family. And certainly, bringing a four-year college is going to bring new, younger people here, it's going to keep our young people here, it's going to create a lot of opportunity for us to get younger. Our average age here is forty-four. It's my age, that's too much. You know, it needs to be younger than that. And I think the gentleman before kind of alluded to the fact that, you know, it's typically young people in communities that build it, that take chances on businesses, that coach, that volunteer, that kind of build up a lot of the things that we enjoy here. Certainly, the economic boost, you know, Mary talked about, for two students, there's one job. You know, I don't know, you know, if that's how it is, but certainly, you know, you're going to bring a different demographic here that's going to enhance our culture. And we're going to have different types of businesses, because they build off programs that the colleges do offer. Wouldn't kill us to have a little more cultural diversity here. Certainly, four-year colleges do that. They bring more opportunities for our citizens to get a little bit of culture and bring students here that are outside of our area. I mean, less than two percent of Alpena is a minority. And it'd be nice to have that diversity and give our young people that experience with people that didn't grow up in this area. You know, I just think it's a great opportunity to also kind of change our identity up here. We're the redheaded stepchild in Northeast Michigan. We're the, we're nothing but rednecks, or whatever people like to say. And we certainly have more to offer than that. And I think you're starting to see that downtown, in the center building, a lot of the arts and culture groups here. This would certainly be a huge step in really solidifying that we have a lot of different things here to offer. And to be honest, if we don't take the opportunity, I think Ascoada will. And I don't want to be the council that says, hey, you know, we turned it down and they took it downstate. Would address a couple little things as far as the vision, that it's not going to, if this was built tomorrow, there's not going to be 20,000 new people here. I think they're looking at maybe a thousand, two thousand students, and then build it up, and build it up, and build it up, and build it up. You're not just going to get that huge overnight, all of a sudden, we've got tens of thousands of people here. So it would be a gradual process. I like to think that ACC would be pretty symbiotic with that. And I can't speak for the college, but I, as an employee, feel pretty confident it would only help ACC. Certainly wouldn't hurt us. I kind of would envision that we could feed people into that four-year school, you know, maybe we'd have more people come. And I do get concerned, and again, something the gentleman mentioned before, that he wants to stay here, he wants to have a family. He's either going to have to be underemployed or move, you know, one or the other. It's difficult, if you have a tier degree or a high school degree, what are you going to do? And it's not like if you live in downstate and you want to go to college, you make some life adjustments. If you live here and you want a four-year degree, you have to move, and that's a major life adjustment. You're taking your kids out of school if you're an older student, you're leaving home. Be nice to have that opportunity here, you know, close to home. And as we pass resolutions like this, I think if things came up along the process that we didn't like or that seemed to be deal breakers, then we could certainly address those. But to me, it just seems like it's the general idea that, hey, we would like to work toward this. It's not an overnight situation, for sure. Probably would drag out half a decade or so, but certainly something that, as an educator and a father, you know, I'd hate to see us turned down and not enthusiastically welcome, you know, the opportunity for this to happen. And it may not happen. You know, it is a big jump, but I'm all for trying to hit a home run, and if we can, great, and if we can't, at least we tried.
Speaking on the employer's side, because I made my comments the last time that we met on the subject too, and I am a supporter of this as well, but one of the things that we run into quite a bit in our business is a lack of qualified candidates for engineering or four-year degree students that basically want to come in and work in the business that we're in. The other reason that I started in politics here was a little bit is because you see nieces, nephews, family members having to move away because of not only job opportunities that aren't present, but educational opportunities. And it has happened in my own family where they move away and they don't come back because a field that they want to pursue isn't here. But I think the education and how many people are here and how many families don't have this opportunity because they can't afford to get down to the bigger universities and live off of the Alpena area. I see this as a great opportunity for Alpena to lead. I've always seen our community as a leader, not only within our region, but a way to lead cities of a similar size, back, leading Michigan back to greatness, and I think this is a great step in that direction, so. You know, I'm glad that the mayor was able to use the table, and, you know, and I appreciate that, will strongly support that for any issue any council member has here. But for myself, I think the idea of this is a good one. I think this is a step in the right direction for Alpena, and I support this effort going forward.
I agree with all the positive comments.
Time to go laugh.
Again, I appreciate you allowing me to overthink this and some time to, if nothing else, raise a consider about considerable more awareness towards it, and I appreciate you guys coming in and giving your perspective, so.
Move and adopt a resolution 2015-14.
Seven.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walbora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I move and adjourn.
Second.
You are watching All About Alpena.